It's eight o'clock. So I'd like to call to order the regular Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, June 11th. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. Um. So in terms of my update, uh, obviously it's second to last day of school. I think tomorrow is officially the last day of school, but um, so transitioning to summer now, which is great. And a reminder that uh, starting this weekend, uh, beach passes will be needed seven days a week because we'll be able to staff up our gates and all that. So um, getting into full swing for the summer. Um, couple other updates. The town hall is continuing to uh, go through its HVAC improvements. Um, the hope is that the major part of the construction will be done by the end of the month. But it might take a little time in July to regulate the new system. So still going to be uneven temperatures um, uh, throughout July probably, but at least this, there will be a system hopefully up and running by then. So anybody who's attending any meetings in town hall, just be aware that it might be a bit warm. Um, I did want to make a comment um, that you know, I think one of the struggles we have is we don't have a lot of uh, places right now to go to that have large seating capacity and also have hybrid capability. So we're always trying to balance between, you know, having a lot of people in person versus being able to offer that uh, remote option for residents too, which is a lot more convenient and a lot of people have requested. Um, the schools actually, Paulson is going through some uh, work over the summer. So that it takes that uh, you know, situation offline. We're going to be having our meeting at the senior center later this month, which we are going to be upgrading the technology. I don't think the new stuff that we just approved with ARPA is going to be in place, but we can bring in Madison Cable Access to do some of the filming. So we can offer hybrid at the senior center. Um, and then obviously Academy in the long run will hopefully be a venue that we can go to that has a larger seating capacity. When I say that, you know, a 150 ish kind of range. Um, and then we'll also have the um, technology available as well. So we're always trying to balance this. Um, you know, offering. So if there's a little frustration about having to come to a hot and sweaty town hall, um, I think it's just trying to work through where we can offer, you know, hybrid. Um. Also just wanted to mention, um, I think the Board of Finance is going to be talking about uh, this Wednesday night, a um, uh, an appropriation into our CIP. Um, it's something that we've talked a bit about. We did one last year of three and a half million. This is trying to take the excess fund balance and use it appropriately by investing in our capital projects. Um, by infusing into the fund balance uh, or from the fund balance into CIP, you actually help future budgets also. So you may not have to put as much in in future years as part of the Madison Investment Plan. So they're going to be looking at that this uh, Wednesday. Um, and perhaps possibly make a recommendation to us on what they think would be a good number, knowing that they want to keep a certain balance in the fund balance. So just wanted to raise that they're going to be talking about that this Wednesday night. Um, and then just other things, um, there'll be the new charging stations that were installed. We're going to kind of formally uh, take those online this month and we'll maybe have a little ribbon cutting. We were waiting on a part for the new one down uh, at Stop and Shop, uh, but that has come in now and that um, that is up and running. So um, I'll send out more information on that and the public can be aware that we have several other now public uh, charging stations in town that are working, which is great. So that is it for my update. Any uh, liaison reports or select my comments? No?
Bad end of school. I mean, it's kind of, kind of a lot going on this week. So I know parents are uh, there's a lot, a lot of stress in families with uh, especially with graduating seniors. So um, with graduation and night in hand. So there's been a lot of work gone into that, which is pretty exciting.
Yeah. Congratulations to those uh, who kids made it across the finish line. I've got a few more years to go, but uh, yeah, there's a lot of after, you know, end of year celebrations and things happening. Any other comments? Al, do you have anything?
Uh, the Academy Building Committee um, is looking forward to uh, presenting to the Board of Selectmen. Um, perhaps at our next meeting on June uh, 24th. Um, they're ready with a lot more information and facts and figures and um, um, uh, hopefully we'll have them on the agenda at our next meeting.
Right?
I unfortunately will not be at our next meeting. I'm just warning you all. So I'm getting, my daughter is getting her white coat uh, down in North Carolina. So a very big day for the Murphy household. So I will not be here.
Okay, great. All right. Well, good. Uh, we'll, we'll see how. I know that there, the intention was to get a report back from on the 24th. Um, you know, we're not going to be taking any kind of action at that meeting, I don't think. So um, we'll, we'll, we'll try to keep it to the 24th, but then see where we are and then we can have, we'll probably be having some more conversations in July about Academy. So uh, okay. Any other uh, any other board member comments? Okay, great. Um. Genie, any citizens comments now? Please raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment. Um, and there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting also to make a comment.
No hands are raised.
Okay, great. All right, great. So we will move on um, to item number six. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Um, all right. Uh, moving on to item number seven is the update from the Facilities Department at the Paulson School. Um, HVAC Emergency Shelter Generator Project Timeline. Um, and I'm going to invite up um, Peter Anderson, who is our new uh, Facilities Director, who is officially taking over uh, July 1st, and also Bill McMinn, which um, I just want to give a shout out to, who is retiring after almost 40 years of service with the town of Madison. Um, I know he's very excited uh, about that. His last day will be June 30th. Um, and we're obviously going to miss him. He's been a, just a steady force um, for many, many years for all of us as we've worked on different boards in town. Um, tremendous amount of service. We've had several send offs for him so far. Um, and I just want to commend you once again, Bill, for all the hard work you've done for the town and for the schools. We appreciate it and hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Peggy. It's been a pleasure. It's been a real pleasure to work for the boards over the years. Yourself as your leadership here, I loved it. It's great. Having a great time. And uh, I have to say, I'm very happy about Peter taking over. Couldn't be more happy about the situation and uh, I'm just here to watch Peter do his thing and put my two cents in because I, you know me, I can't be quiet. So thank you.
Great. Okay. Well, and, and I know I can't, I think today we're hearing more about this emergency shelter, right? Not as the generator, not as much about the HVAC project, or why don't you just kick it off?
Yes, that's correct. We, we, you know, we've gotten some of the design development um, figures back from uh, or for the HVAC uh, for Paulson and you know, it's really in its early stages. So we're not really ready to present on that because there's a lot of adjustments that need to be tweaked here and there. But what I do have for you is some uh, good uh, information regarding to the, the emergency shelter generator. We've been working really hard behind the scenes, um, coming up with some different options for the generator. Uh, the generator still remains the same at a 1.5 uh, uh, kilowatt or generator, which are 1.5. This is a generator that's going to supply power to the entire building. Um, so there was the, the original, the original option was to deal with the diesel uh, generator. We've been investigating a natural gas generator and actually just in, within the last 18 hours, a third option has presented itself that we're going to take a look at too, which will keep us in uh, good regards in regards to FEMA. Um, FEMA's requirements are fuel must be on site. Where natural gas, even though the gas line is on site, it's not considered a fuel source on site. So we do need to uh, adhere to the 24 hour rule of fuel on site. But the dual fuel generator is something else that I'm going to uh, take a look at. I'm going to share my screen because there's a reason why we're starting to not or to fade away from the diesel only generator. Uh, so let me just get this here. I'm going to show you the footprint of the property. Um, let's go to here and then I will. Okay. Can you all see my screen?
Started to share it didn't, never completed.
Oh, okay. Let's try this again here. Anything yet? Nothing yet?
No. It, sometimes if you have two screens on, it gets, the computer gets very confused. So maybe shut off one of your screens.
One more time here because I, I did say it went and then it didn't. It came back. Let me see.
It looks like it's working.
Okay. So what we have here is, uh, I have uh, shown the two uh, red rectangles. One being the generator, the other being the fuel source. This is where the uh, they're, they're located for. So as you can see with a diesel generator, regardless of the, the first uh, rectangle, which is the largest one on the right hand side on your screen, that would be the generator location. The second one, which is to the left, would be the uh, actual, the 10,000 gallon oil tank. Because the minimum requirement has, is, is 24 hours of fuel source. They also require a four day uh, source on this. So that's 10,000 gallons. We'd have to have a 10,000 gallon tank located in the parking lot. We're trying to avoid that. Uh, and taking up that much real estate in the parking lot. So that was the decision of going to investigate a natural gas or now what it has come up as a dual fuel. If we do a dual fuel, that would be a natural gas slash diesel generator, which would have in the generator, 2,000 gallons or 24 hours worth of fuel in the generator, just in case the uh, the, the fuel, uh, the natural gas line was cut, but our primary line would be uh, natural gas. Beyond the real estate being taken up in, in the, in the parking lot, the natural gas generator provides us with little impact to take the building offline to reduce our on-demand fee from ever source. Uh, you can, uh, there's, there's some information regarding you can do this with a diesel generator, but it requires an enormous amount of EPA scrubbing. So that's a, that's a huge cost. Some of the numbers that have come up with the diesel generator and versus natural gas, natural gas is more expensive. But, but besides the fact that you don't have to, uh, or you're buying a uh, a, a fuel tank with diesel, the, the numbers start to balance out a little bit. And by eliminating this 10,000 gallon tank, one of the things that we're not doing anymore is we're not storing a fuel on site in preparation for a natural disaster. Except for if we did go to the dual fuel, we would only be storing 2,000 gallons, which is a little bit more manageable. It's tough to get rid of 10,000 gallons of fuel if you're not using it and you have a timeline on this fuel. So what I'm trying to avoid the town having to do is to purchase 10,000 gallons of fuel, have it on site, treat it. And then if it's not used within a two to three year time period, we must get rid of it and, or, or, or use it somehow. And now we're in the business of transporting that fuel from one place to another, which opens us up to a whole nother set of problems and you know, we're concerns of spills and so on. If the, if the fuel doesn't leave the site and it stays for a certain length of time, the fuel loses its, its ability to perform properly and it breaks down and it starts to gel. And that's just when you don't want to have, that's when you'll have an emergency and all of a sudden your generator doesn't work because you have bad fuel. So we're trying to stay away from that problem. And while we, you know, create a, a uh, warming cooling center, which the entire building can be used. People can go cool down, warm up if, in the, in the event of a, a natural disaster, take a shower. Um, that's, 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 that is our justification here. So this is, this is the update that I have so far on the generators. Again, really got thrown a, a, a curve ball yesterday with the option of a, of a dual fuel. I'm going to have more information on you, for you uh, in the short future on this. Sam's been, Sam's been working really well with me on this and it's just, there's a, there's a lot that's just come up in the last 18 hours.
So Peter, uh, question I have is, um, I know that there is a huge lead time on these. Um, or there was, I'm assuming it's still there. Um, what is the timing where you would pull the trigger on ordering the uh, the generator?
This would, this would be uh, coincided with the, with also the HVAC project weekend. So the generator lead time is about 48 weeks, but the housing around the generator is about 98 weeks. So there's some considerations that we're, we're, we're putting into place. Where do we really want to house the generator or do we want to fence it? The generators are designed to be outside. They can stay outside. This housing that goes around the generator is, is nothing more than a, as a, than a steel shed that's insulated to keep the noise down, but we can actually, we can fence around this and so you're not going to see it, but you, you, you might hear it more. Again, the, the only time that you have to worry about hearing it, of course, is in a natural disaster or during regular test runs, which are only go for about a half an hour every week.
So um, so just so I understand this, so that you would only be using one of those squares, right? Because you wouldn't need
Yeah, the right hand square would be the generator.
Okay. And then you would, um, I'm, I'm saying, what is the plan though, in terms of picking and then ordering the generator? Like over the next month or two, so we can get the order in.
Yeah, once, yes, we, we can, we're going to, we're going to go over with Gilbane on that, what their, what, once, once we've decided on this whole thing with the new uh, dual fuel, which we should have an answer for in the next couple of weeks, and then we can kind of move forward on that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll bring it back to you guys. I'll talk to, you know, I'll go, go with again with the Board of Ed. We'll go over that information, talk to the superintendent, make sure that they're all good with it. But um, I, I, I really want to make the right choice on this and, and, or at least of course, the right recommendation for you guys so that we have, again, not as, these are huge units. These are, um, these units are, they're going to be up to 14 to 16 feet tall. These are about 45 feet long and 14 feet wide. There, that's a, it's a big box that's going to go in, in the parking lot. And if we can avoid having another concrete structure, again, it's an above ground tank and it's, it's, it's a large, it's a large eyesore and I'm trying to eliminate that.
Okay.
Uh, Peter, I'm glad you're thinking about noise because uh, these things really do uh, make a racket and I uh, I guess you're going to do whatever you can. I, I assume that that location is where the generator must be. Is, is that correct?
Yes, there's, there was, there was adoption to three different locations. I don't know if you can see my cursor up here. There was one up into this area here, which really wasn't going to work too well in, in the athletic department. I could understand why they didn't want to have that there. And the other one was down in here and that wasn't going to work too well either, because there's a potential of future expansion over here. So the option to have it here was the best option because all of these three options are the closest proximity to going into the electrical power, which is right here. So we needed to, we're, we're going to need to cut a line through here and come into this electrical sub, uh, electrical panel, which is the main, this is the main breaker location of the school. And that, that transfer switch must be located within 10 feet of it.
Um. In terms of, so once you finalize then, what you're putting into here, that will allow them then to finalize some of the electrical design or the overall.
Electrical design remains the same regardless. It's always, it's still, it's still at 1.5 um, kilowatts.
Okay. And, and then the expectation is you'll be coming back soon with the timeline for the whole HVAC rollout and, and all this.
Yes. As of yesterday at four o'clock, I was ready to recommend one of the two options. And then uh, I, uh, Sam called me up and says, hey, we got it. We got another option. I think it's going to work for you. Um, and that's, that's when we kind of was like, oh geez, that's, that is a good option. Let's take a look at that.
Okay.
Peter, is that, is the housing, you know, this shed kind of construct is, is one better than the other? Is it better to have the housing as opposed to the fencing or, and can we delay the, you know, can you still put in the generator and just delay to put the housing on later? I mean, again, we may not be using it, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I believe you can place the generator beforehand. I'm, I'm 99% sure you can do that because then the housing gets built around it anyway. Um, but that's the housing for the generator is the longest delay or longest lead time. For whatever reason, these housing units for these generators take 98 weeks to get.
Okay. So I think then to be continued, right?
Um, this is a, you know, good information here to have. You can, you know, we have the location. We know we're going to be putting it here. We know why we have to put it here. Um, kind of a, you know, on a high level recap. Uh, if we can, if we can really stick with the natural gas primary fuel generator, what the long-term effect does for us is also helps us reduce our electrical rate because we can run the building um, during uh, their testing. Every, ever source comes out with their, their band rate uh, testing and they'll shut, they'll, they'll monitor your building to see what your power is. And we can shut the building down, running off the generator, and then that affects our, our rate.
Yeah, that, I know that you guys do a lot of hard work uh, managing that peak load.
Yes.
Right? Um, so uh, being able to switch over. So you're saying like, it's, that's more difficult to do with a diesel, but with natural gas.
It is, it is. It is, it was, we, you can, you can, I'm, I'm not sure you can do it with a diesel unless you have the proper cleaning um, apparatus that is attached to the unit to clean the, the fumes.
Oh, okay.
With the natural gas, there is no concern with that.
Yeah.
Is, it's just, I'm thinking of the old car construct, but are diesels typically louder than uh, natural gas or are they all the same?
You know, it's, they're, they're actually, so the diesel generators are, they're, they're surprisingly quiet because of the speed that they run at. They don't run at a real high rate of speed. Uh, there are some generators that run at 3,600. That's not the ones we're looking at. This one runs at 1,800 RPM and they're, they're actually deceptively quiet. It's not to say that it's not a low rumbled hum that you'll hear. It's a big generator. This is a lot of power behind it. So it is a, it, it, you, you, you'll certainly, if you're standing next to it, you'll know it's running, but it's not, they do have to meet certain noise levels.
Okay. Well, I guess uh, it sounds like you, hopefully this hybrid option would be, I know we spent a lot of time talking about the problems with fuel storage and having to get rid of 10,000 gallons of oil. I've all along wanted natural gas for this. So um, this is a good thing. Um, I think that we kind of minimize the requirements there. Obviously there's going to be a cost impact, but we have to weigh that with the ongoing maintenance and management costs of the system as well. So.
Exactly. That's a, that's a, that's a great point, um, Peggy, because there's, there's the cheapest option is always not, is sometimes not always the cheapest option in the long run, where we can take advantage of some uh, some, some of the uses of the natural gas on this in regards to lowering our demand rate, not having to worry about fuel oil uh, going sour, not having to worry about transport fuel oil that hasn't been used. I mean, you know, we haven't had any kind of, thank, thank goodness, we haven't had any kind of hurricane that's required us to have a shelter in place or, or a, or a, or warming or cooling center to be developed in, in, in the shoreline. But when we do, it's nice to have, but when we don't, we have to, then, then we have a management issue of, of, of diesel fuel. And you know, what are we going to do with it? We can't, it doesn't last forever. And when it goes bad, it's very expensive to get rid of. And then you have to re, so there's a, there's a two costs to this. One, if you, if the fuel oil sat too long and it went sour, um, you'll have to uh, pump it out at an expense. Generally it's eight to $12 a gallon to get rid of it. And then you have to replace it with new fuel. So you, you're going to be, it's, it's, it's a huge expense. It's 20, you'd be spending upwards of 20 to 24 gallon, $24 a gallon to replenish your fuel.
Yeah, which is, all right, well. Uh, um, I think uh, I, this is a good update. I think we're all eager to see where we are overall with the project. So when that is ready, um, you know, I think it would be good to come back. And, and I'm trying to remember now, is Colliers advising us on that?
Colliers, yes. And also uh, Gilbane is our construction manager, who I've been talking to Nick uh, Conte quite a bit about this. And uh, you know, we, this, all this stuff kind of blew up, like I said, in the last 18 hours. So they've actually, they're working on getting pricing for this uh, new generator right now.
Okay, great. And then, then you can come back with more of an overall recommendation for the whole project, right? Because I think that's where I think a lot of people are eager to know, when is the work going to start in Paulson? Um, and you know, how is this all going to like sequence out? Uh, because I know that's a complicated discussion.
Certainly, certainly.
Okay, great. Um, so uh, the next, that was just an update. If the board members are all good. Um, the next item also, Peter, I'll have you stay for um.
I'm sharing my screen, okay?
Yep. Uh, discuss, uh, item number eight is discuss possible waiver of the equitable share of the cost to any homeowner wishing to connect to the new water line being installed for the Neck River Elementary School along sections of Margaret Town and Green Hill Roads. Um, so basically this is, um, the town is paying to install this water line, right? And so in theory, we have the ability to recoup some of those costs if homeowners choose to hook up to that water line service, because it's, the, the line is going to be running outside of a number of uh, um, private, you know, residential properties. Um, and um, but in, in, you know, I think in conversations, typically these things would be where we wouldn't necessarily pass on that cost because obviously the homeowners living in this neighborhood have had a lot of disruption. They've had this new school installed. They've had a water line. You know, it's changing the dynamics of their neighborhood. So this is kind of, you can view this as kind of a benefit to the neighborhood, at least that they're going to have access now to public water. Um, so the water company is just asking us, you know, so if somebody chooses to hook up to that water line, they want to know, do we want them to build them basically and try to recoup some of those costs or do we just waive it? And so then they just have a one-time uh, fee that they have to pay. Um, uh, and I'll let Peter explain it a little bit more in depth in terms of how the fee structures work. But um, I think in discussions, Peter, if, if I recall, you know, you know, in my view, this is something we should be willing to offer. We've already built in the cost of the water line installation already. It's part of the project budget. Um, and you know, I don't see any reason why we would try to kind of recoup these costs from these individual homeowners. So uh, Peter, I'll let you explain it better than I can.
So, so the water company I've been uh, in discussions with and, and we have to sign off or uh, Peggy would have to sign off as a representative of the town to say whether they're going to waive or charge each homeowner that what is, who would like to hook up to the water line. Uh, that water line cost is determined at per running foot of frontage to the road. So there's, there's, there's sort of an inequity there where if you have somebody that has 500 feet of road frontage versus someone that may have a back lot that has 50 feet of road frontage, someone's going to be paying, that person's going to, with 500 feet is going to be paying more per foot, or not more per foot, but we're going to be proportionally more than the person that has just a driveway access to a back lot. Um, typically the water company has uh, has found that most towns, they waive this cost at this point because the uh, taxpayers have been taxed already on the project and then you're going to then charge them to hook up to something that they've already paid taxes on uh, as a municipal funded project. The tax, each, any homeowner though would be responsible for a period, this, that, by the way, I want, I want also say that charging would remain in effect for 10 years from the install. After 10 years, there is no charge for the homeowner to hook up to the water. Um, for the first 10 years though, the, the homeowner would be responsible for an $1,160 hookup fee plus any, they're responsible for any of the trenching on their property to bring the water line to their house. Uh, after that, after 10 years, it's a $210 fee to hook up to the water line. And again, they would then also be responsible for any of the trenching to their house. So by waiving the fee, uh, they're referring to the actual install of the water line that the town has paid for in the street.
And, and just curious, like, uh, if, I, I know we talked about this uh, a ways back, but what is the, would the cost be? If somebody had.
They, they have a rough estimate of what the town has paid at this point. Um, they would take that number, calculate it out times the length of the, of the water line that they installed. So for example, uh, I think it's 2,600 feet and it's, it would be a hundred, if, if the town's responsibility at this point, they, they're estimating it to be $150,000. They would divide uh, they would, they would calculate that number up per, per square foot, divide it by two, because there's people on both sides of the street. And that would be the cost per foot for anybody to hook up to the water line of frontage on the road.
That's if we didn't.
That's if you don't waive it. That's correct. If you do waive it, the homeowner would still be responsible for the $1,160 hookup fee plus trenching to their house.
So this is something where um, you know, as a board, we would waive this. Um, we can vote at our next meeting on this, but I feel this was. But I feel this was pretty straightforward, but I just wanted to have the conversation um. You know, the uh with the board on this. Any questions or?
So this one might be better answered by Bill. Um when we when they did the extension on Green Hill. Um with they ran the uh because of the new tank, what did we do there? Do you remember?
You you mean when they ran it for the new school? Peter did some research on that. When you ran it for the new school, Peter, did you you? I think I got my information from Peter.
Yes, uh yes, the town, the town did not waive it. Uh they had a different contract with the Connecticut Water Company. Which was the cost was divided equally amongst the um the residents of the of the town. So if there was uh ten people that lived on the road and the cost was a hundred thousand dollars. Each person paid ten thousand dollars to hook up to it.
But didn't you also tell me, Peter, no one did it after ten years? They waited till ten years to do it?
Yeah, there's so yeah, there was. I don't think anybody hooked up to it until ten years later.
That's a pretty significant um cost if you're saying it was like ten thousand dollars or whatever um.
It's definitely a significant cost.
It's a big, it's a big cost. I mean, in 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 particular, anybody that lives on a corner that may have like eight hundred feet of frontage that. Because that if the the water line goes around the corner and down the road, that could be a a huge expense for someone.
Bruce, is that what you asked me? Because I I wasn't following you on the tank.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about precedent and what we've done in the past and are we are we um doing something different? Which, of course, we can do. I just want us to be aware of that.
Well, and arguably, we didn't recoup anything from that because no one did it, right? So for ten years, we just. Yeah, we never got it, right? Because that's the whole point.
You're saying the nature of the agreement is different?
The agree, yes, the the co- the contract from uh uh um Connecticut Water Company was based off of running foot, not. Not division of equitable share.
We have a long history. We have history of doing other water lines, but for different reasons and different projects. I mean, I know of one that we did on Garner Park, but that was significantly different. We did it, you know, to service those. You know, the Garner Park people and you know, we did it to did it for the the homeowners. This is we're doing it for our project. And you know, I think it's a different project. So we I don't know if precedents can be set, you know, for each project. I think they're all different.
Well, I think as long as we're clear that when we say waive, it's not cost free to the homeowner. Um that there that there would be some fees that they would have to take care of, but other than that, I don't object to. Um waiving the the parts that you've talked about.
You're basically waiving the main line. You're not waiving any hookup fee.
Still pay the eleven sixty, right?
That's correct. Yeah, they will be responsible for eleven hundred and sixty dollars to hook up to the water line for a period of ten years. After ten years, it goes down to two hundred and ten.
It's not eleven sixty each year. It's eleven sixty one time.
Just to hook up. Right, that's correct. But they're responsible for everything that they bring onto their property.
Right, the trenching could be significant. I I would think that cost could also be rather significant.
Yep, yes, it could.
I I would I think we just don't want to minimize that.
It'd be very expensive to hook it up, just the trenching, the water, the plumbing. You know, no one's gonna do it unless they have an issue with their well, would be my assumption. You know, and maybe somebody does. So you know, we need it. We're doing it because we want to put it in for the school. I think it's important that we have city water, regulated water, you know, monitored by the Connecticut Water Company for the schools. I think it's very important. And for fire protection and safety.
Protection, yeah. We have a steady water supply for the fire sprinkler system.
I'm I mean, I haven't heard from everybody, but I'm content to vote um in favor of this today if if everybody else is.
I have no objection to that.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good. All right, so what I will do is I'm gonna uh now turn uh item number nine or eight. A motion, so I'd like to make a motion. We don't have to open up the agenda, right? Because it's an agenda item. So I I'd like to make a motion to approve a waiver of the equitable share of the cost to any homeowner wishing to connect to the new water line being installed for the Neck River School. Along sections of Muggertown and Green Hill Roads and allow the first uh select woman to sign any associated agreements with that waiver.
I'll take the second if you want.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, great. All right, that passes. Good. No, I think that's I. It's good that we we kind of put that uh to bed um and then they can kind of move forward with that. So people know what their choices will be once this is all completed. So thank you for that, Peter.
Welcome.
Um and item moving on to item number nine. Um so I will ask, I think Stacy's joined us for this. Um and this is an update on the ARPA funds. If you recall, a couple of months ago, we said we would target. Um June to know where we are in the balances with a lot of these projects. Um whether or not we think the project is gonna be completed in time or whether or not we've actually um. You know, use all the money. Some some of these projects, we actually ended up not using as much as we had budgeted for. So. Um and then also wanted to talk a little bit about um some other projects that have come forward. So with the balances that we would be able to address, and this is not a complete list. There's there's just kind of summary in the document that received of some um new things. That have kind of raised their hand, so to speak, for this funding. So we could talk a little bit high level about those with the idea that we would come back with more specifics at at a meeting in June or July. Um so that we can then go through and kind of prioritize those new projects. Um so Stacy, I don't know if you want to raise the list.
Sorry, I wasn't prepared to share it, but I can do that. Hang on.
I mean, everybody has it in front of them, I guess. You know, this is the uh schedule.
I have it.
It's not okay. This is not showing.
Is it big enough?
I'd make it a little bigger.
Okay. Okay, so I could walk you through it and then you guys can ask um questions, but I mean, it's pretty self explanatory. Um the original amount, obviously, we all know we got five point three million dollars. All the approved projects through the boards, through the committee, through the boards after the committee was dissolved, came to five point two. Um then we had a balance of one a hundred and twenty one thousand before we act on any action items today. Um the five point two is also um changed for any returned balances that happened before that you all voted on. So we start with the one twenty one. Um we gave every um project or department head. Anybody who received funds, we gave them an internal deadline of Ju- June first. We said we want to see that everything's committed, that you're actually going to spend the money because we do not want to risk that a put that a project. Is under budget and now we won't have time to reallocate those funds to another project. We only have until December thirty first of twenty twenty four to commit the funds. We don't have to spend it until twenty twenty six. So as long as we're committed to a project by December thirty first of this year. We're good to go. But again, we we told everybody, we need to know where you are June first. That being said, there still are some projects that we're going to continue to look at. We may need another month or two. And that's why we gave the early deadline of June first. So after June first passed, these are the projects that came back saying, okay, everything is encumbered. We could return these balances. So we're on your agenda today. I believe one of the items is to return. The one fifty nine. Um yeah, item eleven, to return the one fifty nine to the bucket, basically. So then we take the one twenty one, after you make um approve this agenda item. Your number will go up by a hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. That being said, there is also this project that has been on here. It was approved way early on for a wastewater treatment study. Peggy wanted to bring it up again and have a board discussion to see if we do want to move forward with the study. Um so after you all decide that, we'll know what that number is after you make that decision. So assuming, and this is just for presentation purposes, I'm not saying this is going to happen. But assuming we say, all right, let's hold off on the wastewater study. Maybe we'll do it in the future. We're not gonna do it right now with ARPA funds. Because we really want to commit these funds, we will now have three hundred and thirty one thousand dollars as our balance. Again, moving target, there are still project balances. Hopefully, we will just keep updating you and cleaning things up. Down.
Just real quick, so this does not have the downtown lighting project number still, right? Because that could be a big one.
Yep, I was gonna show you guys that afterwards.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so now we have three thirty one. There are three requests that have already come in. So we're showing them. We're not going to take action on them tonight or this morning. Oh, my God, this morning. Um but we could discuss them just because they did come in. Um we all know about the band uniforms um for the Board of Education. The senior center is looking to upgrade some ADA um upgrades to the bathroom doors. And then we did get a request from the Board of Ed side for community pre-K consortium program that came from the Assistant Superintendent. There are other items that we just don't know amounts yet, and that's why we opted not to take action on any of these today. So that we'll have the bigger picture. But as of right now, we officially have the hundred and nine requested. So if we approve that at a minimum, which I know it's not on the agenda, our balance would go down to two hundred and twenty two thousand. That being said, I you know, as I keep saying, there are project balances that we're not sure. They may, you know, they may come back to us and say, okay, we're done. Three big ones that we know about and Peggy just alluded to was downtown center. So we have about. For two pieces of the project, there's about a hundred and seventeen thousand out there. Rob is working, Rob Russo. Working on finalizing that number and seeing what that number is. We have been told that there will be some kind of funds um or amount of funds returned, but we just don't know that number yet. So we didn't want to guess, so.
Yeah, that's more related because the project is is almost done. We're still waiting on one piece to get those last two pulls down. But um the um the problem is Comcast does not build us for any of their cable work. Still, we keep begging them for an invoice. We have some estimates of what we had forecasted, but we still can't seem to get an invoice out of them. And so we're just trying to get that final number from them. That will swing this uh one way or the other, I think, for that. Um and I know Rob has been trying to do that. So that might come back, you know, the next couple of weeks possibly. And we've been hounding him for months now. Um uh but that, you know, if they if the invoice ends up not being as bad as we anticipated, then that could, you know, replenish quite a bit of money back. Uh into the account. And then obviously, the geothermal until we're till it's all all done. Um you know, we won't know what the balance is gonna be uh for that for that project. Um and then I think the um the uh downtown lighting, which is mentioned under consideration. That's the one that we as a board decided to punt to ARPA, you know, that was in the budget originally. Uh the EDC is gonna be presenting to us what their recommendation is at our just our June twenty fourth meeting. So we'll have a number. Um we had been soft circling, I think, twenty six thousand dollars what was in the budget because that what is what cost us last year. Um so uh we'll see what the EDC comes back, but that number could be twenty six thousand. And then the decision had been to find a more sustainable way uh project, you know, uh funding for that going forward. At a at a uh more cost effective project. Um I wanted to talk about the arc wastewater thing real quick and then we can have a general discussion just to give you some background. This is the um downtown. It it's not just the wait. What we're doing a townwide wastewater treatment study that is funded through EPA funds. And the town um has paid for a chunk of that. Um but this is the um just focusing on downtown and it was it was really gonna be like a needs assessment. Um we started last summer drafting an RFP. We tabled it for a while because I think there was a lot of discussion about what is the study gonna accomplish? Do we wait until the wastewater treatment study is completed for the whole town, the facility study? Um and then uh the EDC obviously would like to have this done. So this is basically going through. Um and looking at the downtown area and figuring out where is there a problem, you know? What you know, because I think there's this uh uh understanding that there's a problem and there's been conversations for twenty years. That we have limitations, but I think we've never really studied the area as a whole. Um I mean, there was some work done like twenty five years ago, but a number of properties have actually upgraded their septic system since then. Um so we wanted to kind of step back and say, okay, what's the lay of the land today? What are the real uh issues impacting economic development downtown because of the septic uh constraints? And um and so I we haven't lot, we have kind of a draft RFP and I think Trent might be on this call as well. Um uh you know, and we can pull the trigger on it. We just haven't done it. And I'm just debating, is that a big priority for us right now or would we rather use this money for something else? So I'm I'm leaving that as a conversation to the board. I know it's a looming question and Trent, maybe you might want to talk about some of the. You know, ongoing issues with downtown.
Yeah, sure. Uh good morning. Uh yeah, so Peggy, just to clarify, I think where we're looking at with um. The the needs assessment, it was gonna be an addendum to the facilities plan, uh wastewater plan. And um you know, a a portion of the of of the needs assessment was gonna be qualitative qualitative data. Um you know, maybe surveying some of the property owners to see. Um maybe wh- what are the their ideas of building out their current business or or uh facility or or building and and what that need is? Um but yeah, the other part of it was gonna be uh to assess the current conditions of the downtown area. And you know, it's it's a dense area in town. The soils aren't favorable in most cases. Um for 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 sub sewer sewage uh disposal. Um and you know, there's the size of the the lots, right, that I could also be limiting. I think the only. Good thing is that it's public water uh downtown. Um so you don't have to have like a seventy five foot setback from any portable water service. Um some of the things we've been experiencing, you know, um probably on both ends, uh you know, as as we know, or maybe not, uh you know, Starbucks is is currently closed. Um that 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 Plaza has been experiencing um some some limitations and I some, you know, it's. Because of poor repair, but it's also um you know, it's it's heavily used, right? I mean, and then we have Jersey mics going in there. Um CVS is not 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 that big of an indicator of of the flow there. Um so they're gonna be looking in there in the process, maybe at a phase one right now of looking at a repair to that plaza. What that septic system is gonna look like um is still to be determined by the engineer. On the other end, um you know, you do have, on the other end, meaning like RJ Cafe and and Bistro. Um you know, the soil there in the back, um you know, adjacent to Stop and Shop, i- i- it isn't quite favorable. Um yeah, there there has been an an upgrade to the septic system there for that particular building. But again, I I just think uh because of the use of the building is is important. So there are there are some constraints there. Um I can't really speak to economic development, but I think that that needs assessment would address, you know. What do people, what what do the property owners want? You know, what what's the need and what that and what does that look like? And ultimately, this would have to go to RFP. I don't I don't think it can be an addendum to the wastewater facilities plant facilities plant.
Yeah, no, I think we kind of decided that it was really needed to be a separate exercise. Um and uh um that's why we kind of held off on it. Um thinking we're gonna have to just kind of go out to bid on a on a specific project for this that's separate from the overall study. Um so I guess I I the question is, we can launch that, you know, and and get it going over the summer. I just. You know, wanted to hear the board's thoughts on this.
When is the overall study meant to be completed? Because would that then dictate when we would potentially start this one?
Uh well, that is, they're getting their final report together, right? So they're gonna be coming back to the board over the summer, I think. Um you know, probably later this summer. I don't think that's gonna have a big impact on this. Because that is really focusing on residential problem areas, correct, Trent? Like there's some data in there that's helpful that we could use, but I it's not like they're gonna be. I mean, unless you have.
Yeah, I mean, the areas, the areas of concern are are more residential. There there's very little commercial in the areas of scope of the of 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 the project. But you know, downtown uh is briefly mentioned. But, you know, downtown uh is briefly mentioned in, in the wastewater study as um an area that needs to be further, further um investigated. Again, uh, you know, where, where the study of this needs assessment of downtown comes out of, I think, you know, the EDC is going to be an important role in that as well. And.
I mean, we could, we could basically try to do this with the planning reserve later, um, rather than tie up. If we're going to do ARPA funds, then we would need to finalize the RFP this summer and, and, and put it out there. You know, and contract with somebody, I, I think uh in the fall.
My recollection is that um, we, we had some informal discussions about um the appetite for the property owners um, in this area to, to be part of this project and to um carry the financial burden um in, it's at some level on it. Um, it doesn't seem to me like we would need to spend fifty thousand dollars to get feedback from the property owners. Are they even willing to um, consider a project like this? And maybe that, that feels like the place to start.
You, you were suggesting Bruce put, put some skin in the game to have each of the property owners?
Uh, yeah, I, I, you know, did the um, do the property owners want to see this type of improvement downtown? Because, because presumably the property owner is going to bear some, if not all of the cost.
I mean, I, I think that, that is the, you know, this is going to be a complicated uh, a complicated uh improvement, you know, do, would we have to create some sort of sewer improvement district or whatever? Or special taxing district to fund this? I don't know. I mean, they talked about this, like I said, probably fifteen, twenty years ago, or they looked at different options. I think right now I just wanted to step back and say, is there a problem now? Have enough, you know, property owners made improvements to their existing systems that, you know, there's kind of this understanding that there's an, a restraint, but is there really restraints now? Because people have made the investment, so. Um, and I don't know if it would cost fifty grand or not. We just kind of put a placeholder there for this.
I'm very much in favor of uh, uh, us finding the political will to move forward on this study somehow. The discussions that the town engaged in in the far distant past, and it was more than fifteen years ago. Much further back than that. The, the conversation always got stymied and stalled over who is going to pay for potential improvements. Whether those uh improvements to the downtown wastewater treatment would be spread across all taxpayers or whether it would be um uh simply spread across the downtown property owners or whether there was a mixture of the two. And that's where the conversation stalled many decades ago. And I think if we choose to move forward on this, um, it's, it's hard to not get the cart before the horse here, but um, I think people's um willingness to engage in this conversation is going to be dictated by whether or not uh how much they're on the financial hook for it. And I, I don't know how to get out of this conundrum. I don't think we will have a meaningful discussion as a community. Um, uh, if people aren't sure what the fiscal impact on them on, on the personal finance fiscal impact is going to be on them.
Is the only way to find out that impact by doing this study?
I, I mean, I think that, I don't think this is going to come up with solutions. This is just going to identify. Yeah, this is the, gonna really kind of put a, clarify the problem uh under today's. You know, uh, because, so the wastewater, I think the conversation, we're also going to be having the same conversation for the wastewater facility study, the townwide one, right? Because there's going to be areas of concern identified in that. And we're going to have to talk about how do we, what's our plan to fix those things in the future, right? And some of that is going to have to involve some sort of funding source. So it's going to be the same conversation there as well. Um, this is different because it's economic development, really. Uh, versus um, uh, environmental. Um, because I think really, and Trent, correct me if I'm wrong, but really it's the environmental concerns, right, that are driving the other study in terms of the areas of concern.
Yes, correct.
So, um, I mean, we can-
Economic development is pushing for this. Are the businesses pushing for us to do this too?
Well, well, that's a good question. I, I think um, you know, I don't have a, a the best understanding from all of property owners down there, their perceptions of wastewater disposal, but there's a handful that I know of who would like to have or see uh some, some change. Um, n- now, the, the change that they, what they want, you know, I think that needs to be presented um, like, like Al said, from a cost, cost perspective and, and, and what that looks like. Um, and I think this study, I think first it was gonna capture an area, Bradley Street, Wall Street, Boston Post Road, and, you know, some of that. Um, and uh, what are the existing conditions, right? This, the lot size, the existing septic systems, what those septic systems accommodate, if it's a office, if it's a restaurant, if it's um, re- retail. Uh, and look at, um, and then also survey the property owners to say, well, well, I, and I, I'm just hypothetically speaking. You know, if there was to be, to be an upgrade, you know, what would you want for your particular property? Is it, is it more seating for the restaurant? Is it to build out the retail more? Or is it to change the use of your building from office to X? Um, and uh, and then kind of, they would collect that and then look at some con- conceptual alternatives to what can fit and accommodate that design flow based on the the perception and the expectation and um, and merit for, for more options for sewer disposal. So I, I think it's certainly a roundtable discussion. Um, it needs to happen.
Well, maybe that's, yeah, so, so Peggy, you suggested using planning money. Um, which I think we, we're, we're in this this gray space of undefined, right? We, we don't know where we would put it. We don't know who wants it. We don't know what it would cost, and maybe the place is to have that roundtable to start speaking with the property owners in the affected area, saying what, what would you hope to see, if anything, out of this? Um, because I don't think we need to do a study to say there's a problem there. We already know that. Um, the question is, what's the solution?
Yeah, Bruce, I'm, I'm with you on this, and I'm trying to be very supportive of Trent here. I, I think everybody's in, going to be in favor of this if it's, if, if the cost is shared with somebody else. I think people are going to not express support for this if they think the whole cost is going to fall on themselves.
So I, I, I tend to agree with that, although I would say that anybody who's recently done a system is probably not going to want to be a part of this in any form. So let, I mean, if we take the apartments on um, on Bradley, um, I, I can't imagine they're gonna, uh, uh, circumstance where they abandoned that system to hook into a townwide or, or, or an area wide system. Um, e- even if it were free, I can't imagine they would do it.
Um, I, I wanted to ask Trent, um, Trent, what would you like to see happen here?
From the property owners that have expressed, you know, their concern, um, it gets complicated when talking to them about potential repairs. Um, because of the soil, and I think uh, Bruce, to your point, you know, the apartments versus to where um Boston Post Road is and around the area adjacent to Stop and Shop. Different soil, different proximity to inland wetlands. Um, and uh, you know, it, it gets a little tricky. What I like to see, I think, in a, in a perfect world, obviously, there's, there's, there's there's probably some form of a community wastewater system. Um, but then, you know, you get into the operation and the cost of that continuing for years on end and what that looks like, you know, maintenance and operation of that. And um, you know, obviously it would have to be a DEP system, but I don't know what the size of that looks like. I don't know what the cost of that looks like. Um, but I think that, that's what would probably best in terms of wastewater disposal would, would be some form of a community system down there. Location, I can't tell you. And um, you know, it's, it's going to be a, a lot of pipe and it's going to have to be forced main to somewhere else. Um, conveying it from that area.
So what, one thought I have is, I mean, originally this kind of spun out of a request by the EDC and when Sherry was here also. Why don't we table this? We don't have to make a decision today, and then I can kind of talk, go back to EDC and talk to them a little bit more about this. Because I would hate to pull the funding away right now because it is, at least is there, sitting for them. Going to the planning reserve is now you're competing with other things, and then it has, that has to get approved by both boards also. Um, I think we all agree. I think it would be helpful to have this, and that was the thinking behind this, right? The question is, you know, is our, should, i- is it urgent enough to use ARPA funds for it, I guess, is the question, right? So um, if the board is okay with it, let's table it. I'll go back to the EDC and talk to them a little bit more about this. How, what a priority this is for them. Um, and then we could make a decision on this, you know, uh, the next time we, we go through the ARPA review. Because we can pull the trigger on an RFP pretty quickly. We have something drafted, and I think the EDC had weighed in on that last year, right? Trent, and I know that was more Sherry was kind of driving that bus when she was here with us. Um, so um, we can regroup a little bit and I'll bring it back. It sounds like there's support for looking at this, right? The question is, do we want to use this funding? Or just kind of, you know, take our time a little bit more with it and use another source?
Yeah, a- and the cost, the cost wasn't quite fifty thousand, but again, I, I think if we have the roundtable discussion, the cost of what we thought uh would be an addendum may, may creep up closer to that number because the, uh, the, uh, needs assessment was a, was a little under twenty four thousand.
Okay. All right. So why don't I, are you good if I, we bring, I bring this back with a little bit more information?
Yeah, yeah, it was, could we get the um, the RFP um, resent to us? I'm sure we probably saw it once, but I've long since forgotten what it said, just to get a better sense of the scope and what the um deliverable is.
I sent it to you, the yesterday Peggy.
Yeah, but I, I want to make sure that's the most recent, because I know Sherry and I had worked on something that was more um, a little bit more uh focused, I think. So I just want to make sure it's the most recent version, okay? I know that's kind of where we had landed with uh Weston and Sampson, right? But then there was, we, we did try to make it. Sherry had spent some time trying to make it more of this kind of needs assessment approach. So I will get the most recent version and send that out, and it did go through EDC, I think, too. They gave comments. So, all right, I, you know, the part of this is we just lost the champion, right, for it? Because we don't have an economic development director, and we have a new uh EDC board chair who I know was supportive of this, but he has not really weighed in on this since he's taken over um as board chair, so. Okay, so we will, to be continued. Um, so just-
I have a, I have a question about the table here for Stacy.
Why did we give that one dollar?
No, no, it's not the one dollar, and it's not the three dollars. It's the bottom total. Um, if we could scroll down to the bottom, Stacy. The four sixty two, does that include the, the, the last three numbers, the uh two hundred and forty?
It does.
It does. So that's, that is-
We don't know yet, right?
So this is a number that we're working with. If, well, actually, this is a number, or this, um, yeah, this is a number if everything above it happened. Um, but this, this four sixty two is still unknown because of downtown and the geothermal and even other projects that I didn't list. But so the two twenty two is more of a number you want to focus on right now.
Okay, so that's, so the two twenty two is a pretty firm number.
Sorry. Does that include the fifty coming back?
It includes a fifty coming back, and it includes these three items coming out. So if we don't do that-
Right.
We will have one twenty one plus one fifty nine, which is two eighty one.
Okay. That's really the number we have to work with right now is two eighty one.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, just for the sake of, you, because I know you love doing this live, Stacy. Um, could you leave the fifty in like we just talked about? So make that a text or, okay, and then go down and let's, can you, can you just turn the eighty, the twenty seven and the two thousand into text so they don't get added up? We could, so that we can see them, but they don't get added up, or, or do that?
Is that okay?
Yeah, maybe, maybe put the um, in the descriptions, so in column A for those lines. Put in the dollar amounts, just so we don't lose sight of them. And what I'm trying to get at is, is, is what is the real number that we're starting from?
Eighty one.
Well, it's, it's two eighty one, kind of given with possibly another two hundred and forty-ish on top of it. I think we probably, we need to keep both numbers in, in mind as we have our discussion, right?
And even with those three funded though, it was still two twenty two, right? So there's still a significant amount of money that we haven't allocated.
Right. Yes, it, yes, it's just how significant. This is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
And, and frankly, may grow. I mean, with the, those italics below, the three projects, we still don't know that.
There are some other small balances we don't know. So I agree. I think this two eighty one is a good number of what we're working with right now.
Um, and Stacy, do you have a probability you can assign to the two hundred and forty thousand dollars?
I don't know, Bruce. I wouldn't want to even guess. You know, I, I don't know. I'd have to ask Billy for the geothermal, and we'd have to get more info from Rob on downtown.
I mean, I think uh, uh, geothermal, I, I would assume that we're not going to see much left there. Because these projects always have a last minute thing, rush that comes in. Um, so I think that's going to be pretty close to budget. And downtown is, uh, we, we will see some money, but um, Rob, you know, Rob seems to think um, it's, I don't, we don't, we don't have an estimate.
Yeah, you know, and also to clarify downtown, this is ending balance right now. We still have encumbrances out there that could be less, so this balance could even increase. So I wouldn't even want to guess at what the balance is. You know, the amount would be at this point.
All right, so we're really, we're talking about a number that's somewhere around three hundred thousand. Two hundred and eighty.
Yep.
Well, it, three hundred, yeah, which may grow also.
Correct.
Right. I, I mean, I, I think at the end of this, we're going to have to have a plan to pull the trigger on something in the order of two hundred and forty thousand on so that we don't lose it. But it sounds like we really can't begin to allocate against that two forty today.
No, I think the intention is not to vote on any new projects today.
I understand that. I, I, so I'm sorry. I, when I say allocate, I mean, we're, we're penciling in. We're not, we're not chiseling into stone. We're just penciling in numbers.
Right. I mean, downtown lighting is another twenty six thousand. Um, the chamber kiosk, we're waiting on a number. This was actually presented, discussed way back when during the pandemic. Um, and then I think with the turnover of the staff at the Chamber of Commerce, it just kind of got sidelined, and so um, the, that will hopefully have an updated number for it. It's, it's not going to be huge. Um, and then the community board um, was basically another thing that we've been talking a lot and overall, when we talked about signage in town. Um, and this would basically be similar to what you might see in, in front of Clinton Town Hall or in Old Sabre, when you get off the exits, they have an electronic community board, so they can put activities and events and things like that. A lot of towns have put these in. Um, so we're getting an estimate on what that would look like. Um, and i- i- interestingly, I met with the um, people from our regional economic development thing. One of the first things they said is you need to have one of those boards like Essex or, uh, uh, Old Sabre has off the highway. Just telling people everything that's going on in town. Or uh uh Old Sabre has off the highway, just telling people everything that's going on in town. So this would be right in front of the ambulance. So we should have a pricing on that in the next week or two. Uh, and then the A B C House, I know um that Bruce, you had had some conversations with them. They had actually reached out to me. A ways back about ARPA. Um, but they were still early stages in their project. Um, and they, I as they talked about when they came to our board. Two months ago, um, you know, they're doing a big renovation project at the A B C House and so I think they've approached again the board about a potential. Assistance on that project. So they will need to submit. You know, a request for that as well, and we would hopefully have that the next time we would go through making decisions on on the uh. Uh, on, you know, remaining balances.
Right.
So I don't know what that number is.
Uh, two other thoughts I'd like to capture in the considered. To be considered. Column. Um. One is this idea of um. A small amount of money being set aside for um. Uh, mental health um consultation co-pay, so this is mirroring the Clinton. Program, full disclosure, my wife brought it up. Um, she's a, she's a therapist, but Clinton has set aside ARPA money. To help people who are seeking. Um, therapy. Um. To to offset some of their out of pocket expenses. Um. And the other one.
Who would um who would manage that?
So the Clinton program, the individual um registers with the town. Um, and then. The um. It it's all through the finance department. Uh, and then the, so when the, when the person is registered, they notify their therapist, the therapist then. Sends an invoice to the town Clinton. Clinton cuts a check back to the therapist. For the amount of the. Of the co-pay or. Or deductible. Um.
So is there an approval process or we're just automatically if they apply, we're going to?
Yeah, so people, the people in in Clinton are self attesting. Um, that they're seeking therapy, that it's related to the way COVID has impacted them. Um, and uh, and the town is then saying, okay, fine.
For any amount, if someone has a co-pay of a hundred dollars or twenty five dollars, they're just. Approving.
Yeah, and the um. The, of course, the. Fund would be finite. So it would, you know, let's say we set aside. Five thousand. I don't know how much Clinton did, but let's say it was five thousand dollars. Um, once that money was gone, it was gone.
So the one thing I would say is we can only do this through the end of this calendar year. So again, we have to commit all the funds by December thirty first of twenty four.
Right. But are you saying that they would also have to be used by the end of this year?
Yeah, cuz how else would we? Commit it like we need a contract, you know, this is a little unique. But. I would think we would need to. Yeah, I'll have to think about that one a little more. I would think we would need to commit and use them before December thirty first.
Um. Stacy, do you? Do you know the finest person in Clinton?
She just left. I can sure, yeah. I don't know if they have an interim and they have a new town manager too, so it's kind of they're in flux right now, but I'll reach out and see what they did.
Yeah, and I think that uh the my thought, cuz I know other towns have basically given. You know, essentially donations, right? So I'm wondering if we could set this up as like a special account under uh Youth and Family Services. Right? This would be a budgeted, you know, amount of money that we would then give to them. Um. I I think there's a way we can figure it out to make it work. Um. Why don't we find out more about the Clinton project and then um and I I'm assuming Bruce, you're talking. What, five thousand dollars or something? You're not like talking.
Well, I don't, I I I. Order of magnitude, I can't imagine it would be much more than five or ten thousand dollars. Um, really would be. I think two things out of Clinton. I- is it working okay for them or is it just a big nightmare?
Yeah.
Uh, and. What? What sort of subscription rate do they have on it? Are they? Are they seeing a significant number of people that are doing it? If they're not. You know. Maybe it isn't such a great idea. If if it's being used regularly, then. Hmm, it's it's worth some more discussion.
Okay.
I'll definitely reach out. I just, I I think I do have an issue because we're not committing. It's not like I'm giving five thousand dollars to a not for profit. For them to run a program. We're doing it internally. And the the um guidelines are that the funds need to be committed.
Mm hmm.
Um, by December thirty first, but it would be held into our account, right? Versus if we were writing a check to some outside organization and they were then. Yeah, that's my issue, but I I definitely I'll reach out and see what they're doing.
Okay.
The other one is, um, you know, we've talked about at. Academy, how we're intending to have a community flagpole. Um, as as part of that project when it's all built out. And um, I don't know the status of the grounds around it. But I'm wondering if we can't. Move forward with a community flagpole sooner rather than later. Why does it have to wait until? Academy is done. And so I'm proposing the cost of installing a. A flagpole. Where people could petition. To to have the the flag of their particular cause. Well.
Mm hmm. I I think there's a couple of things we could probably talk about Academy, um, because I think there's a lot of. Projects that are spinning out, you know, from that besides just renovating the building. So I think that's one we can certainly. And and I'll 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 be coming forward with some options also for Academy. Uh, for ARPA funding. But I think that's a worthy discussion also um to talk about that. So and and a lot of this depends on how much money we actually have left too, right? I mean, some of these are smaller, some of them are gonna be larger. Um. So. Add that, we can add that to the list. I I I think we need to find out um. We'll have to get an estimate. Of what that would cost. Um.
I hear you say you've asked A B C House for a request at this point. Cuz I know they've they've approached both Bruce and I, we've had. Quite a few discussions. They're obviously, to your point, they have an ongoing. Project um right now and I. I'm hugely supportive of um of helping them, you know, given it aligns with our strategic plan, so. I think it's a s- a a really good use of funds. Um. So I wanna advocate for that.
Well, my I uh Bruce, you've been kind of the primary. Uh, person speaking to them recently. Uh, did you convey to them that they would need to submit a? Kind of memo, you know, outlining. Um. What type of funding they're looking for, what it would be used for. It's for the project, I'm assuming.
Um, right, so the discussion was um. Funds to help offset um the the actual construction costs. This is a full. Um, they've they've essentially gutted the house and 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 are redoing it. Um. And um. We didn't talk specifically about the form of application. Um, it really is, I think, the uh. The consensus amongst. The board, um, our board. To support this and then we certainly could give them. Um, the application. Um, that we've asked other. Um, groups. To do, um, although. I. We we probably could just. Do it, right, as the. As we 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 have discretionary. Powers to assign the money. Um.
Yeah, but I think it would be good to have it laid out, you know, cuz that form kind of went through about what the project is, the total project cost, how much funds.
Yeah, we would definitely, yes. I I think I think we all have a good intuitive sense of of what it is.
Right.
Um, and and we've even talked about. You know, we wouldn't expect it to go towards. Anything that that might appear to be frivolous, right? We're not looking to put sixty inch TVs in every bedroom. Kind of thing. This is, this is the bones of the house that we're talking about. Um, and and those those related costs. Um. And, I mean.
Okay, so we we can talk, I can talk offline with them to guide them to what would be the appropriate request. You know, uh, to put through. Um, and then that would be part of uh. You know, what we would discuss at the next meeting when we kind of start whittling down and allocating the funds.
Okay, can we talk about the first three items in this considered? List?
Uh, what, oh, yeah, yes.
Um.
So they they have, they they have submitted a formal request. Uh, these three items.
Uh, so. I I mean, I. You know, right out of the gate. Um, I have a concern that, you know, less than a month after the budget referendum. There's a request from the district for band uniforms. Um. That um, this, they didn't include it in their budget. And now. They're they're looking for it um. Outside of the budgeting process. That and I'm having trouble understanding how this is an ARPA. Um. Kennedy. I'm I'm not sure how band uniforms. Really fill the. The vision and mission of the money.
Well, I I I, so there was a lot of conversation at the Board of Finance about these band uniforms. Um. The Board of Finance did make. What was the reductions that was taken out of the Board of uh uh Education Budget, Stacy? Two forty. Two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, and so in conversations, similar to what we've done with the Police Department, um, we said. Are there some non-recurring things in here that? Would make sense to fund outside of the budget process. Don't build it into the base budget because it's, they do these every ten years. Um, this is actually beyond ten years that they replace these uniforms. They get. Um, dry cleaned, um, and the Board of uh. Education can't save up. They can't have accounts, you know, savings accounts for things like we can do. Um, so they have to put it into their budget and this is kind of a large nut. So. When they got this reduction from the Board of Finance handed to them, they kind of looked at things and said, okay, well, this is a non-recurring expense and maybe there's a way we can get this funded. To another source. Some members of the Board of Finance suggested ARPA, possibly looking at ARPA. Um, we've given money to a lot of sports organizations, right, through ARPA. We've used it for lighting. For uh use soccer, we've used it for lighting for Little League, we've did it for the tennis courts at hand. Um, so the thought was that, you know, the band needs these new uniforms are expensive. Um, and ARPA would be a appropriate source for that. Um, so for timing, it's just more they wanna get moving on it if they can get this funded. Um, so that's kind of what how they submitted the request to ARPA.
Isn't the Board of Ed typically return funds every single year um? Back into the. The fund?
They have. Last year, they returned two hundred and twenty six thousand that we in turn, we just put that into the Special Ed Reserve.
In returning that two hundred whatever thousand, couldn't they just, you know. I'm I'm playing a shell game here, but couldn't they return a little bit less and just get the uniforms?
We don't know where we're gonna end up this year yet.
When do you think he'll have that visibility?
We keep the year open through July because things trickle in, so I would say it would be at least surge at the end of July.
Well, I I Scott, I think you're onto a good idea. They've they. They can spend their money um. Anyway, they want, when do they have to make their commitment on what they return in the end of July?
Um, well, it's not finalized till the auditors come out in October. Um. There, they, everything needs to be encumbered. By June thirtieth. If we wanna use the current year funds. So they would need to decide in order, actually place an order by June thirtieth. When I said things are open, that number could change what's returned to the town because invoices. Could roll in in July. They shouldn't, but they usually do. So we don't know that final number that would be returned until the end of July. But if they were going to use the funds, everything needs to be encumbered in a P O issued and the item ordered by June thirtieth.
Is there a way they can do that? Is there a way they can do line item transfers to create eighty thousand dollars and and place an order?
I'm sure that could be a discussion, yeah, that um. If that's something that they wanna do. They would just, like I said, they'd have to, we'd have to commit to it and order it by the end of the month.
So. They already have the money.
Yeah.
Well, I think that we have to see where that is, and we're not voting on this today, so um. I think that perhaps let's. Put it on hold and then see. Where they land and where we land cuz there's a lot of competing interest, obviously, for the uh remaining ARPA funds, right? Um.
It is, it is that, but there's also. It just. I'm uncomfortable with. Them cutting eighty thousand out of their budget and then turning around a month later and asking for it back.
So they they were guided to do that in the sense that, just like we did with the Police Department. Bruce. We have several items that were did, we're doing appropriations for. We didn't think it was a recurring expense and we said we will fund it outside of the process. We're gonna do appropriations. Or fund it through this new C N R E account that we're setting up, right? So I'm just saying, it's not like they are trying to do anything. They were guided that this was kind of the approach of taking out these non-recurring items. We will not have eighty thousand dollars in their budget next year, right? Because. That's, we said, we don't wanna roll forward an eighty thousand dollar uh line item that is non-recurring. So that's why they took it out of the budget.
Um, but they they didn't receive that guidance from us. They received that guidance from the Board of Finance and. Um.
No, no, they were following our lead. This is the conversations we've had for, this is the fifth budget year where we've looked at staff and said. And a- as a board, we've said, we don't do that for their budget, right? Because we don't weigh into their line items, but. We have done that for our budget multiple times. We've taken things out that were non-recurring. And said, let's fund this outside of the budget so we don't roll the base budget, right? That's been the philosophy. So um, I'm just saying, I don't feel like they're doing anything wrong. They're just asking, they're saying. We pulled this out, we had a big reduction in our budget and now we'd like to fund this through. Uh, we'd like to see if we can get this funded. The band needs uniforms. So if we say no to this. Can they find it through their end of year money? Maybe they can. So we can table it for now. Um. But you know, I don't know what what, how their, you know, numbers are gonna play out at the end of the year. That's all. So I would hate to just say. We're dismissing it for ARPA because. What are you gonna tell the band? We just spent all this money on soccer lights. And, you know, lighting for baseball uh teams and tennis courts, all these money going to athletics. You know, I and and you're gonna tell the band, you're not gonna get new uniforms for another couple of years?
Well. Uh, no, what I would say is. The Board of Ed chose to cut this out of their budget. Um, I I don't see how this is the fault or or the problem of the of the Board of Selectmen and. Um.
I've just, it's fine. Obviously, people, you know, we we're gonna talk about this more later. I just think, you know, and if they can find the money. That's obviously the message you're sending. Try to find the money in your leftover funds at the end of the year, right?
Ye- yes, yes, and and you're right. We're not making a decision about this today. We're 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 discussing it. Um, and. I guess I'm expressing my discomfort. In the way um this is, this has come up. So I I think also with the uh, I don't, I don't understand what a pre K consortium is. So I'm having a tough time understanding why it's a ARPA.
So this is a group of, it is a, uh, they've started getting together. Um, all the different. Um, it really kind of started during ARPA or during uh COVID. Um, and it's all the uh pre K programs in town. Um, that and the school uh district is a host of it. Um, and they get together and they have, you know, educational discussions, they troubleshoot, they talk about a lot of different things. And um, i- and it's, I attended one of these meetings, the superintendent attends occasionally. Um, and I I forget what the specific request was for Stacy. They wanted to do some, is this a uh? Educational thing? I don't remember.
It wa- it was for practice uh development.
Yeah. Yeah, and this is, obviously, that's a part of uh. Yeah, yeah, and this is, obviously, that's a part of, uh, to, you know. Demographic that was, you know, hit the pre, a, a lot of the pre-K programs and, you know, dealing with young children during COVID. And so that, that, this kind of spun out of that.
Is this an annual expense or is this a one-time two thousand?
This, I believe this is a one-time two thousand.
Or? Do we know what it's for?
For training.
Training, there's a memo for all this stuff, but this, we weren't voting on these today, this was just supposed to be, here's some stuff that's coming down the pike. So there's, there's been memo submitted for all of this.
Was that in our packet?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that.
But it's not, you know, that's, this is going to be coming when we talk about it at the next meeting, so. Similar to downtown lighting, there's going to be more detail, that was something we pulled out of the budget, right? And said, we didn't want to build it into the base budget anymore, and so let's fund it through ARPA for this year. And then, uh, and then moving forward, we'll hopefully have a reduced amount in the budget. Um, and then I talked about the other things, but we're, we're getting information on all that. So there'll be backup and all that when we're actually going to be going through a more detailed review of this stuff.
Yeah, and, and, and forgive me, I mean, I, I, I know that we've done, you know, these. Specific conversations that you're referencing, Peggy, um, when we are talking about the school district. You know, I just want to make sure that. Their budget is three times or, or more than two times bigger than the town's budget. Um, I want to make sure that they're fully utilizing that budget. Before it starts coming out of the town end. Um, and, and if it's an appropriate use, then of course I'm going to be supportive of it. But, um, I, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking about a, a. Board of Ed budget that is almost seventy million dollars and there's, they're asking for two thousand.
Well, the, the, uh, that is not the school district that's asking for that, it's, it's this group. That, you know, it's kind of a loose affiliation, it's not the school district's group, right? Stacy, this was just when Dale had started this. And, um, as it's kind of the host of it, um, and it's been a good for the, for the community. I went to one of these last month or two months ago and, you know, they sit around and. Talk about, you know, whatever issues are impacting, because remember, all the kids that go through these pre-K programs. Are now going to be funneling into the kindergartens of, in Madison Public Schools, so. And interestingly, I learned there that they all have wait lists now. Um, you know, so that's helpful information, you know, that, you know, you have a lot of young families and a lot of demand has come back for these programs. Um, so. But anyways, that, that, we should save that conversation for, um. You know, future, future discussion. No, and I'm not trying to jump on you about the, I, I, I just find it's been interesting because I've been living with the band uniforms now for six months, um, through the budgeting process. And, um, you know, uh, uh, there's, and I just feel like somehow we got to get this done for them. Because I think the band deserves to have new uniforms, they're over ten years old. Um, so if it's not going to be here and it's going to have to be through leftover funds that the, the, that the district decides, fine. Um, I just want to, I, it's a worthy. It's a worthy cause, I guess, is my point, right? And how it gets paid for, I guess, is ultimately going to be up to the boards to decide, but, um, that's where I just get a little. Because I, for some reason, this seems to create more, uh, um. Contention and discussions than when we talk about the, you know, lighting for soccer. Uh, or the, you know, lights at the baseball field or, you know, the, uh, tennis court, so. Um, there's a lot of good things that we funded for the schools through ARPA. Um, I guess is my point, plus we did the lighting at Daniel Hand, um, for the. Uh, stage that was also ARPA where we, um, those were all C I P projects that we helped. You know, get over the finish line with additional funding because they were coming in under bu- uh, over budget, so. Uh, we have helped the school district a lot with the ARPA funds. Whether or not this is the right one now, maybe not, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that we're not. You know, we're showing support for the, for the, for the purpose, I guess, um.
And I think my only, um, addition to this particular portion of the conversation is, okay, so these band uniforms are ten years old. What happens ten years from now? When they need more uniforms? Um, why is this school not making these uniforms as much of a priority? As the uniforms for other sports?
Well, those are done on a, those are much lower, they do, they have a, a uniform fund.
Oh, I know, I know, I know, but I'm just saying overall, it's, it is the responsibility. Of the schools to make sure that all of these things are being a funded, are being funded appropriately across the board. You know, they're making, they make priorities for the theater department, they make priorities for. Athletics, not just with uniforms, but also with fields and whatnot, so, um. This is just kind of more of a forward-thinking comment, is that ten years from now, are they going to ask for eighty thousand dollars? Or more, because prices of things go up, so there might just need to be. Um, some changes in the way they do things.
Well, I think they actually may have the opportunity to start saving. Accounts, which they don't have the ability to do that, um, with some of the legislation that was passed, so that is going to be a conversation, I'm sure that the Board of Ed is going to have. They do not have to, you know, the new, we haven't seen all the details yet, but the, uh. State Legislature is allowing Board of Eds to s- keep some of their funds now at the end of the year and set up savings accounts. So that would help with these types of things, right? Um, because they did not have the capability of doing that before.
Listen, I, I think nobody's trying to make this hard for the Board of Ed, so let, uh, let's state that out loud, I think, you know, we want to support. These uniforms, I think the, the question is whether or not they can use existing funds and the calendar's ticking. You know, we're already June eleventh right now and Stacy, you're saying that they have to do it by the thirtieth of the month, so. That's kind of tricky, it's, wait, so we just don't want to, we don't want to, you know, miss the opportunity to get these uniforms too.
Okay, so I think that, um.
We're being a dead horse.
But obviously, they, I think that the school is going, is hearing the message that they want, you know, the board would prefer that they find. Funds within their existing budget or remaining funds for the end of the year to get these uniforms paid for, right? It's a priority for them, um, so that sounds like the message I'm hearing. Um, but, uh, we're not voting on anything today and we have a lot of requests that we're going to have to review, um, in the coming weeks and months. Um, and have to weigh priorities, so.
Okay, um, the ADA upgrades, are, are those a C I P project? Are those already in the schedule?
So. Go ahead, no.
I don't know much about it, but I do not believe it's in the five-year plan right now.
It isn't, um, it, it was something that Austin kind of flagged more recently. And I think originally he was going to use that grant that, that, you know, came from. The COVID one, um, instead, because they had all those issues with the kitchen, he had to prioritize the kitchen. Um, could this get put into C I P and wait? Yes, it's basically, I don't know if you know, but at the, um. Surprisingly, the bathrooms at the senior center, I think they want to have. Push doors, is that what they're doing on this? I forget Stacy.
Yeah, I, I don't know the details of that.
Yeah, it's, 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 the way the doors and everything are in those bathroom are not the easiest if you're dealing with walkers or wheelchairs, so. This was something he just flagged as a, as a project he wanted to go for, um. You know, is it, uh? And, and he's not here to talk about it, but he will be when we actually go through the requests again. Um, if it does not get funded by ARPA, he would, he will be putting it into C I P.
Okay, and that's just to show that I'm not picking on the school district. Uh, 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 you know, dropping in a, a project, I, I get that it's less than thirty thousand dollars, um. And we've talked about these smaller one-time things, but, um. The. I, it, I would be more comfortable with the project. Coming up as a C I P and then having us divert it into some other. Plan, if we felt there was an imperative to it, rather than it just show up out of the blue.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
The, guys, the flip side of this whole argument too, at the end of the day, if these three projects come back with all these, the money at the end, at the bottom of this spreadsheet. The reality is where we may have five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to allocate and allocate soon, so. We may need to fund all of this stuff, so, you know, we may have too much money. Which is a good problem to have, by the way.
Yeah, it, it, well, and it, it is, and, you know. I think the, the other option is if we don't want to fund all these smaller projects, you know. We can pick one bid project out of C I P and just pre-fund it now, right? Um, that's coming up, but, uh. So, okay, so, uh, once again, the intention was not to have a project-by-project review today, Bruce. So, um, it was more just flagging some things for future conversation, um. And so we'll have the backup, we'll have the, you know, um, staff member here so they can adequately speak to the request. Um, but, so this will be, to be continued. Um, but at least now you guys have a sense of how much, you know, what we, this is a good problem, right? It's a good thing, um, that we're going to be able to get some more stuff done with the, with the funds, whi- which I think is a positive thing. So with that though, I guess really the, uh, item number eleven is just to return those project balances, so we do need to vote on that. And that goes to the Board of Finance on Wednesday. Um, discuss and take action to approve the return of ARPA project balances totaling a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars to the ARPA fund.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, and that's just that list of stuff that, uh, closing out of accounts, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, so that'll get us to two twenty-one now, so we officially have that balance and then, um, to be continued, uh, going after that. Um, item number twelve is discuss and take action to approve an application to the, um. I forget, the B G A fiscal year twenty-four burn discretionary community project grant for a hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars for. Uh, Madison, uh, Youth and Family Services Police Social Worker Position.
I'm on the route. Second.
All right, great, and we have Scott, this is one of the federal, uh, community-directed spending, um, grants that we received, uh, or awarded in March. Um, and so I'll let Scott speak to this, this was, just to remind everybody, this was a position, we'd had a pilot program. Two years ago, we put in the budget, we decided let's hold off and because we were going after grants. And now we've come through with an actual grant to fund the, uh, to continue the, the pilot program with a grant. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you Peggy, so, um, and just for clarification, the grant, uh, amount is actually a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars flat. I don't know if that needs to be reflected accurately in the, uh, agenda of the minutes, but that's.
Oh, okay.
We requested thirteen-nine and they came back and offered funding, invited us to apply for the funding at one fourteen. Um, and this was, as you mentioned, a grant that we were, uh, encouraged to go and find, uh, short of bringing it into the town budget. Following the pilot back in twenty twenty-two, that was a very successful pilot. Um, we, uh, we do have pretty extensive write-up around the pilot, if anyone is interested in that. Um, for the purposes of the, the burn, uh, community project grant that we've been invited to apply for, which is this grant. Uh, it's based off the pilot, the idea would be for us to hire and, uh, place a, a part-time social worker. Uh, it, to create a position for that, um. Hopefully, long-term, uh, but for the project, uh, purposes, for this grant, we have a two-year, um, grant term. We have got enough money in that, uh, grant to fund, uh, two years, twenty-four hours a week. Uh, based on the, the, um, hourly rate that we would propose for this position and we used. Our current clinical positions here at M Y F S, since we've got similar positions, we use those as a. Uh, bit of a, a marker for, um, for comparison for this position. Um, I, myself, uh, Chief Drum, Lieutenant, uh, Jeremy York. Uh, we've worked very closely together and putting together, um. Uh, not just the, the concepts for this, but now putting pieces as, that we would want in this position. So for the purposes of this morning, um, I did have to, uh, write extensively for this. Uh, grant, so it, it did require, uh, in order for us to secure the funding, um, a very specific budget, I had to write towards. Um, eh, an abstract, a narrative that included very specific goals for this. Uh, which I have done, I'm happy to share with people, I did share the abstract as a part of the, uh, documents for this morning, if you're curious to look at that. Um, and really just thought of the goals as of, as what we would want to show. At the end of this two-year term, that we could then bring back to the boards for consideration, if we want to continue this. Um, we would foresee this position, I think, important for everyone to hear. Um, really just extending social work outreach into the community as a part of policing. And we did find, um, eh, in the pilot, as well as I think these, as these programs have really grown across the country. Um, a lot of benefit to having social workers onsite, not just to assist police. Um, but to have a leg in the door, connection to folks at that point. Um, where there's a human service need that they then can follow up with. So it is very much about supporting police and supporting people in crisis moments in the community. Uh, and equally, and maybe in some cases even more importantly, the follow-up and helping people connect to resources. And really kind of creating an experience for people when they've had an intervention with the police. Have an opportunity to kind of work that through and then hopefully, if, if there was something about a need. That that gets addressed and carried through and it, these programs across the country have shown enormous impact. In terms of how people experience the police, experience, um, their connection to the town and their support. So, um, it's a grant that's going to pay for, um, the salary, some overtime, uh, and training, uh, over the next two years. That we would like to put in place.
Okay, um, and, and one of the things I want to comment is, just to clarify, because there's this misnomer out in the public about this is somehow tied to Academy. This has nothing to do with it, the person is not going to be seedy, sitting, well, they will be po- sitting in Academy. Or no, they're going to be sitting at the Police Department, aren't they?
The police, yeah.
So they're going to be sitting at the Police Department.
Um, hopefully they'll stop by if we're in, in Academy and they want us, you know.
Yeah, yeah, when you, when the youth and family moves to Academy, they, but, um, so there's no, uh, correlation or link or whatever at all. Uh, between this and what is going on with Academy, um, but, uh, I think it's a great, it's going to be a great opportunity. These programs have been so successful in other communities, um, and ours was very successful as a pilot program, so, um. You know, so I don't know if there's any additional, um, questions about this?
Not a question, but just to build on what you said Peggy, um, not only, um. Is it, is it not part of that, but it's also represents an effort on the part of Youth and Family Services and the P D. To get out in front of what we expect to be legislation. Um, that will begin to mandate that these functions are in each town. And so rather than wait and, um, be hit cold with mandate. Where we've been doing and Scott and, and Chief Drum have been working proactively to, um. Uh, build this out, experiment with it, fine-tune it, so that when the day comes, which it probably is. Um, that it's mandated, we'll be in a great position to, um, to, to, to have this program mature.
Very fair point.
Yeah. Any other questions on this?
Shall we vote?
Okay, great, so I, I'm going to amend my motion to amend the dollar amount to a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Um, and with that. Uh, can I get a second on that?
Okay.
Okay, great, um, so with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Great, all right, thanks Scott and, um, you know, excited to see this move forward, so.
Um, my thanks to the, to, uh, Chief Drum and Lieutenant York, they've been. And, uh, just tremendous partners, uh, in, in this effort, um, so just. Want to extend my thanks to them and look forward to continuing to work with them and all the police.
Right.
Have a good day, everyone.
All right, thanks Scott, um. Item number thirteen is discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request for twenty-two thousand dollars from the Madison Police Department. From the undesigned fund balance to the N P D communications account for end-of-year overtime reconciliation pending Board of Finance approval.
Moved, so moved. Second.
Okay, Stacy, just want to give a one-liner on this. Oh, and Jack is here as well.
Sure, we had, um, a couple of open positions during the year, we also, um. Signed a collective bargaining agreement and we had to pay some retro, so that kind of made the account over. Um, so hopefully going forward, next year, I believe we're fully staffed at this, hopefully will not be an issue next year.
Jack did it. Is that pretty much it?
I would say you're spot on.
And the reason we have to do, because we've had other special appropriations of the NPD, right? So that's why we're voting on a twenty-two thousand dollars, right? Just a reminder. Uh, we, uh, we're over the threshold. Can you remind the board and me again, the threshold?
Um, I believe special appropriations, we're still having the boards approved. Anything over two fifty goes to town meeting. And then line item transfers within.
That's what I'm thinking, the line item transfer.
Over twenty thousand dollars needs to come to the boards.
Yeah, okay.
I know, it's so, new rules.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you. Um, okay. Item number fourteen is discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request for sixty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars from the Madison Police Department from the undesigned fund balance to the NPD Police Services Account for, uh, overtime special duty pay pending Board of Finance approval. So moved. Hey, this is the kind of, uh, mechanics we go through at the end of the year all the time. If you want to just, uh, for the public's benefit, explain that again.
Yeah, the account, uh, is generally the account set up approximately thirty-five, forty thousand dollars. This is the highway construction project. This is when you see an officer behind the AT&T truck, the Connecticut Water, the work at a construction site. We bill out for the car, we bill out for the officer, we bill out for the, uh, insurance. All costs associated would have the officer there. That goes back to the town by way of the leader general funds. So generally, this, we, we probably bring in anywhere from fifty, a hundred thousand dollars at an income level. This is the way we bring it back to zero every year. And then we've talked about is another way to do this. Uh, because it appears that you're asking for another sixty-nine thousand dollars for an operation line. It's not. Basically, we're, we're returning money that was used to essentially start the, the, uh, construction site program. Put the officers out there at the end of the year and always show some plus.
Hey, any further questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, I know, uh, this isn't an agenda item, but Jack, I don't know if you just wanted real quickly, since you're here, to just give a real quick update on the sidewalks, because people might have seen some activity going on on Route One with the sidewalk. So I just thought we'd use this opportunity, real quick, one sentence.
Very good. The, uh, crosswalks are up for, um, the town roads that are adjacent to Route One at, uh, Lantern Hill and West Wharf. You'll also see them out by Cottage Road. You'll see one going up on Wall Street mid-block. The ones that are on Route One were waiting a encroachment permit approval. So that at this point, you see the actual crosswalk that crossed Route One area at those locations. What we did was we had the equipment, we had to get it out there. And we have enough, uh, I have enough public, uh, uh, conversations where people are really beseeching me to get it done as soon as possible. So what you're seeing is the start of the project, um, will be completed once we have the permits in place and they put the, uh, second crosswalks actually across Route One.
So it's just helpful to see that we will be, there'll be a lot more, um, work being going on. We're going to actually be applying for lots of funding to construct the final crosswalks, um, and, and other improvements and signage and things like that. So that'll be coming to the board, um, to, to complete that whole. But I think those are going to be great additions and something a lot of people have been asking for. So. So we have to take each step at a time, right? So, all right. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
All right. Item number fifteen, um, is discuss and take action to approve a contract with, um, Bo Vay or Boe Brothers LLC for eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents for the rehabilitation of the Flintlock Road Bridge Project and authorizing the first select woman to sign all contracts and documents associated with this award. The project is funded through the state, local, bridge and CIP.
Moved. Second.
Okay, great. Um, this is one that, um, has been on our list for quite a while. So it's, it's exciting to see this move forward. Um, Rob, I don't know if you just want to give a quick update of the, what the project is entailing and why we're doing this?
Sure. So, um, hey, good, good morning, everybody. Uh, yep. So basically, uh, a few years back, uh, we had, you know, the, this Connecticut Department of Transportation does their bridge inspections of not just town, but all towns in Connecticut. And, um, recently, you know, they do the over twenty, over twenty-foot bridge spans as well as the under twenty-foot bridge spans. Uh, the over two, over twenty-foot bridge spans, as you know, we had Heatherwood Drive and County Road, um, bridges replaced within the past eighteen months to twenty-four months. The under twenty-foot spans, so smaller span bridges, that we found that two were in poor condition. Um, we've gotten preliminary applications completed, um, by our consultant and submitted them to the state. And, um, they accepted both of these bridges into the state local bridge program, one of them being Flitlock Road over Huzzelguzzle. And the other one, um, being Garnet Park, that one's still a little bit of a ways out. That's probably going to be construction in twenty-five. But in short, this is the, this one is a rehabilitation project. So this is not a full bridge, uh, removal project. It's just going to be rehab, some new head walls, um, slip line, the pipe, I think. Um, yeah, it just basically make overall improvements to, uh, um, to the exterior of the bridge as well as where on the, the downstream and upstream sides of it. It's, it's, one side is fronted by land trust property. The other side is fronted by a property, private property owner. Everyone's on board. Um, we've gotten rights of access to, um, to, to work on both properties to complete the bridge project. In short, the project estimate, um, the project estimate, the base estimate for construction with ten percent contingency was eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then the, um, the, 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 the low bid by Boe Brothers came in right at within two thousand dollars. So the, our engineer did a great job estimating this. Um, so the low bid was eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents, as you see in your pocket. So it's exciting. This is, uh, I'll be a third bridge being either, uh, replaced or rehabbed in the past, uh, eighteen, twenty-four months. So we're hoping to get this going probably by, uh, mid-July.
Great. I know you guys have, uh, had your hands full with a lot of these projects. So, uh, thanks for that. And we're excited to see this one go under construction. Any further questions for the board? No? All right. With that, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Yep. Okay, great. All right. So I think, um, well, ten o'clock. I thought we were going to get done earlier today, but a lot of conversation on important things to talk about. So, um, with that, I guess, moving on to citizens' comments. Um, any hands raised? If anybody would like to, uh, make a comment, please raise your hand.
No hands are raised.
Okay, going once, going twice.
This is out there. I'm surprised he's not asking a question or comment. Yeah, absolutely.
Hope you're doing well, Gus.
Good to see your, your name there, Gus.
Um, and with that then, um, I guess, hearing no objection, um, I would like to adjourn the meeting. So. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.